Okay, you're unmuted.
No.
So you all have to call for a roll call.
Okay, we're getting ready to start the nominated committee meeting. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Here.
All right, you have three.
Yes, nominated committee has been discussing and talking over the last couple of weeks, and we would like to present to the planning commission the candidate of Mr. Christopher Bedell for the vacancy of the secretary position. And we need a...
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So we will proceed with sending that to the planning commission. Will that be tonight, or will that be the night? And that will be tonight?
It'll be...
Yep.
It's not on the agenda for tonight. The Mar... Not March, May 5th executive meeting.
Okay, perfect. So now do we take a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
All right, I'm gonna mute us until public hearing at 7:00.
Thank you.
You are unmuted.
I'd like to call this April 14, 2025, public hearing to order. Can we take a roll, please?
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Here.
Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to welcome you all to St. Louis Planning Commission Public Hearing Executive. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing a presentation on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, Chair of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble to my right, Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you've picked up a copy of the public hearing guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list, the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit of the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the planning commission agendas. By doing this, you'll be able to access a copy of the commission's report when it goes to the county council. The commission will not make a decision on every petition heard this evening. Typically, the commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on May 5, 2025. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Plan within the two weeks of this meeting by April 28, 2025 will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The planning commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then, the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak after that person's in opposition or with concerns. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive, first-hand presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by the other speakers. The commission may ask questions of any speaker after each petition is heard tonight. I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concerns. This is not a vote and is not binding on the commission or the county council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for this petition. And the first petition we're gonna hear tonight will be PC 08-25, Alex David.
Is there a representative for this petition here this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Chair, I would recommend, I recommend that the commission hold this item, and let's hope that the petitioner does arrive later during this hearing.
Okay. Well, then, we'll hold this item till later this evening?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, that's your recommendation? Has everybody heard the recommendation? Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. So we'll move on to PC 09-25, Animal Protective Association of Missouri.
Will you go back and manually advance the slides?
There we go.
To, in the back, I'll go back through that door.
The clicker's not working.
It's moved once.
Yeah.
We'll have to work on that.
Because we had that same problem last time.
It works when I'm, it worked when I was sitting there.
I think we got her back. We've got her back.
Susanna's back there doing it manually.
That one's the one that's held.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the first one's held.
PC 09-25, Animal Protective Association of Missouri is a request for a change of zoning from R4 Residence District to C8 Planned Commercial District, and a request for amended development in the C8 Planned Commercial District to develop an animal shelter, animal hospital, and accessory offices on a 4.77 acre tract on the southwest, southwest of the intersection of Benham Road and Redmond Road. This site is located in North County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the From this larger aerial, you can see some of the commercial development along Benham Road and the residential development on either side of Redmond Road. The site has two frontages. This is looking south into the site at the public hearing sign on the Redmond Road frontage. This is looking west down Redmond. Looking north across Redmond at the adjoining residential development. Looking east down Redmond. Looking south into the site. Looking southwest into the site. Looking east toward the existing building closer to the Benham frontage. Looking south along Benham Road. Looking southwest at the existing building. Looking east across Benham. Looking south up Benham. Looking north into the site. Looking north into the site again at the existing building. Looking south toward the existing parking. Looking east toward the existing parking. Looking northeast at this structure. Looking east toward the structure. This is the rear of the structure. And now we will hear from the petitioner.
So this does not work, is that right? That is correct. The clicker isn't working. So we do have Susanna in the rear who is listening, so as you, if you need a slide moved forward, just say next slide. I apologize this evening.
Oh, no problem. Thank you so much. I guess we'll do introductions here really quick. Dan Welsh, I'm an attorney for the APA.
Sarah Javier, President and CEO of the APA.
Karen Gulick, I'm an architect with Grubson Associates.
Okay to proceed?
Please.
All right, thank you, sir. If we can go back to the beginning of the slide deck, I just wanted to kind of generally orient you briefly on the nature of the request before you. It's a request by the, as you heard, the Animal Protection Agency, the APA, which you may or may not know, it's a nonprofit organization, and the mission is outlined on that slide, dedicated to bringing people and pets together, advancing humane education, and creating programs beneficial to the human-animal bond. And here, the APA would like to renovate the property in order to advance its mission by launching a location to service the currently underserved North St. Louis community, which is the site of this particular location. The project itself is proposed to you all and designed in two phases with two separate structures. The first phase is intended for the building number one to house the APA's primary animal shelter, veterinary clinic, and offices. Phase two down the road, intended use for, this building would be for educational programs, community engagement, collaboration space, and pet owner support space, including classes and camps. And Ms. Javier will certainly go into much more detail and do a better job than I will in telling you about what the mission looks like and what the proposed intended use is for this particular location that they're so excited about. Next slide. So the current use, currently, there's two uses at the proposed site. It's a C8 use and a residential R4 use. If we can go back just real quick. All right. So the, the property itself previously was utilized for what looked like an auto dealership that serviced the area. It's been vacant, if we can stay on that, okay. It's been vacant for quite some time, and as you can probably tell from the photos and what you may see in greater detail later on down the road, it's kind of decrepit and hasn't been utilized for quite some time. The residential property is also vacant, contains no structure. The residential property is also vacant, contains no structures, no homes. So it's a, a use that we think is a good one for reasons that we'll go through later, but also one that probably could use some economic stimulus and some beneficial development. The next slide contains a survey, which we just want you to generally orient yourselves to, because it does depict the site in its as-built conditions prior to the site plan, which is before you here on the next slide. The site plan, as you can see, depicts the two structures in a phased development that I mentioned previously. And Ms. Skulk here will certainly provide a lot more detail with respect to the, the design-build components of the project, but nonetheless, you can certainly see the, the two buildings on this proposed site plan, and you can see the proximity to the two thoroughfares. I know it may be hard to see, but. Now my eyes are failing me as well, but I, the intention of that slide is for you to generally see what the proposed site plan looks like and to orient you in terms of the proximity of the location to the two thoroughfares. So we can go to the next slide. As I mentioned, the property is currently zoned right now as C8 and R4. There's been multiple visits that we've had with the planning division in the course of commencing this project and submitting the application for the rezoning. And I wanted to let you know and just make sure that you heard that we, we've been listening very carefully to all the feedback that the staff has provided us with, and also listened very carefully to the suggestions, generally speaking, with respect to what we ought to consider with respect to the rezoning quest, request generally. And you'll see here that the request was thoughtfully arrived at primarily due to a lot of feedback and suggestions from your staff, which could not have been more helpful, I would like to add. So the C8 zoning, the intention or the reasons that we agreed with your staff's recommendations in that respect are enumerated on this slide. Certainly, the C8 zoning would allow for the full range of commercial uses, including the intended use, which is not a normal one, it's an animal shelter. You also saw the proposed uses as articulated on that first slide, but it's nonetheless what I would consider to be a relatively light use in general and a use that does comport with your C8 zoning requirements. The C8 use, as requested, also includes greater flexibility with respect to setbacks, of which our site plan is compliant. Greater control to your commission to control certain elements, including landscape buffering, and that was another comment that we received from your staff that was essentially designed to let us know that the proposal might be more thoughtfully or more favorably considered in the event that we had additional landscaping, which was a comment that was incorporated into the proposal that's before you this evening. And of course, greater flexibility with respect to the placement of structures on the site as well, concentration near the intersection, which was another comment that was contemplated during the design phase. Next slide. So just to kind of summarize, I know that you all don't do a staff report with recommendations or anything along those lines, but had you done so, I think some of the conclusions and some of the recommendations are set forth on that slide. Your staff, as I mentioned, after a thorough review process, which was, I thought, thoughtfully done, drew the conclusions that our use was not extremely high density, which I'm here to tell you is accurate. Appropriate, low impact, close to residential. So the site as it's currently designed and the application as it's currently proposed to you all would not seem to have any impact. If any, it would be de minimis to any residential that's in the somewhat close proximity to the proposed site, and the use is light in general. You know, the next slide. That's what I have for you in terms of orienting you generally to the application that's before you. I do, however, want to make sure that Sarah Javier, the President and CEO of the APA, has an opportunity to tell you a little bit more about the use and the reasons why this site was selected for that particular location in St. Louis County.
Thanks, good evening, thank you for allowing us to present our project to you. Next slide, please. So as I shared, I'm President and CEO of the APA Adoption Center, and for those of you who are not familiar with us, we have been serving St. Louis County and the surrounding region for over 100 years. Our focus is on adoption, wellness, education, and support programs for pet owners, but we really do so much more. Oh, please go back, thank you. So we have really strong collaborative relationships with many organizations and corporations and businesses in the community. So when we do our work, we're looking at both ends of the leash. We're helping pets, but we're also working with people and the people who love those pets. Some of the collaborative partnerships that we currently have, I want to talk a little bit about, are intended to help us build healthier communities as a whole. So those include food pantries, human-serving food pantries where people can also get access to pet food and things that they need. We also work with numerous domestic violence shelters to help survivors of domestic violence get to safety, caring for their pet and reuniting them when they are at safety, and we do something similar for people who are experiencing housing instability. This not only helps the people, but it also helps the pets stay in the homes with people who love them. And we also work with organizations that promote equity as well as helping those with disabilities, whether it be volunteer opportunities, providing them with a variety of services, pet owner support, or other things. Go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. So since 2017, we've been serving this area that is in North County, surrounded in red. Oh, go back, please.
I think there's an.
I have a feeling that it's auto advancing, so so sorry about that.
I think someone back there is literally trying to.
You're trying to, to beat the system here. So, you know, we're just going to get to look at all of the, the slides quite a bit. So anyway, so since 2017, we've been doing outreach in areas of North St. Louis County that were identified as being the highest areas of need. These were areas where more pets were coming into shelters, more pets were wandering, there was a lack of spay and neuter services, many challenges for this particular community. So when we started this in 2017, it was using data that was available to us. And we've been since doing something called Pet Partners, and this is a program where we provide free vaccines, we do vaccine clinics throughout the year, there's door-to-door support for people who have pets, providing preventives, flea and tick preventives, pet supplies, pet food, things that they need. We actually just hosted our spring vaccine clinic on Saturday in collaboration with the St. Louis Zoo at their Wild Care Park, which is just a very short distance from the property that we are presenting to you this evening. And we had a record-breaking vaccine clinic. So in a matter of four hours, we served 167 pets, registered 40 of those pets for free spay and neuter, which is often not accessible to people who live in predominantly low-income communities. We put in 67 microchips, so that is 67 pets who, if they go wandering, can get home very quickly. We also administered 328 vaccines, distributed over 3,000 pounds of pet food, provided 141 ID tags, provided 114 pets with flea and tick preventative, and also identified 17 potential Hope Fund candidates. And that is a program that we have that provides financial support to people whose pets need veterinary care. So we're doing all of these things. When we opened up registration for this vaccine clinic, it filled up within a matter of six hours. So there is a huge need in this community, and the people really, really want these services. So I'm very proud and excited to be presenting this information and looking forward to the APA being able to really embed ourselves in this community. Go ahead and, uh, thank you. Next slide. So we did a needs assessment in 2024, and we wanted to look at, well, we had a hunch that this was the area where we needed to be doing even more. The data really showed us that that was indeed the case. So our Board of Directors wanted to really look at if we're going to invest money in the community, we don't want to just help some animals, we want to really be able to move the needle. So if we're looking at pet overpopulation, how do we really make change? And so this, um, this needs assessment showed us that there's an average wait time, if you can afford it, of three or more months to even get your pet spayed or neutered. And in this community that's outlined in red, there are only two veterinary clinics for the entire area. There are only two available resources for grooming, and they have limited hours and access. There are only three to four pet retailers where you can even get food for your pet. If you look in comparison to West County, which is outlined in blue or parts of it, there are more than 50 veterinary clinics. There are 40 grooming services available to you, and pet retailers, there are 20 to 30, and that doesn't include your big box stores like Target. So in addition to a lack of resources, there's also the barriers of cost, transportation, general access. What do we do with, you know, unwanted litters of cats and dogs? We're having more and more come into the shelter, so how can we move that needle? That is the problem that this new location will address. Next slide, please. So just to kind of give you an idea of the need, we've been doing this extraordinary work in North County since 2017. We still are seeing 6,000 pets enter last year, the St. Louis County Animal Care and Adoption Center. We had 2,000, actually over 2,000, at our Brentwood location. These are pets that are lost, that people need to rehome or come through our doors for a variety of reasons, which tells us that a lot of that has to do with spaying and neutering. We also had 752 pets receive services, but as you can see, when a vaccine clinic fills up in six hours and we serve that many pets in just a few hours, there's still a huge unmet need. In fact, last year for our pet owner support services, we had 852 requests. We were only able to feel, fulfill 26% of those. So a huge number of people that were not able to get the help that they needed. Next slide, please. So to move the needle, the APA Board of Directors has committed to a sizable investment in the North St. Louis, excuse me, North St. Louis County community, which is why we're here this evening. We're looking at a $22 million investment in what we are proposing. This investment of a facility is located in the area of greatest need. It will allow the APA to improve access to spay and neuter services, affordable wellness care for pets, adoption services, pet owner support programs, community and youth education programs, innovative workforce development opportunities right there in the community, as well as opportunities to volunteer. It will also allow for greater support for pets and families who are experiencing crisis, such as domestic violence or housing instability. Next slide. So I won't read all of this to you, I actually have a packet of information here that has all the, the slide deck in it, but as you can see from what I've talked about in the slides, the need for these services cannot be understated. When we presented this project at a recent town hall hosted by Councilwoman Shalonda Webb, we had enthusiastic applause by people who were very excited that we would bring services of this kind to their community. I even had people coming up, hugging me at the end and thanking me, and one person who was sure to note that she does not hug strangers, but she was so delighted that we would consider investing in this way in their community that she just had to hug me. So we have an extraordinary opportunity to create positive change for both people and pets in North St. Louis County, and so today we're asking for your support with the project in this, in the rezoning, so we can move forward with this vision and make a difference together. So next, I will turn it over to Karen to talk a bit more.
Can move to the next slide, please. So just very quickly, let's, just want to say a few more words about the property selection. As Sarah said, it's located at 11755 Benham Road and was chosen to, due to its convenient location in the APA's outreach area. It's close to major highways and public transportation. So as Dan already said, the existing building was most recently a car dealer, and it was, the building's in relatively decent shape with portions built in 1955, 1971, and 1988. And we're demolishing the oldest part of the building in the upper corner that's closest to Benham and then remodeling the rest of it. Uh, next slide. So I'll just go into a little bit more detail about the proposed site plan. The proposed project will be done in phases, like we've already said. Phase one is a remodel of the existing building with a two, with a two-story addition added on and will be approximately 22,000 square feet. It will function as a shelter and a clinic and adoption areas, and it'll have administrative spaces on the second floor. Phase two building, which is more toward the top of the screen toward Redmond, that will be approximately 10,000 square feet, and that will function as a community and education building. All traffic will originate from Benham, which is the road to the right on the screen. We originally proposed a curb cut onto Redmond, but removed it per the request of the planning commission. We're relocating the existing curb cut on Benham to the south just a little bit to improve circulation into the site. And so, like, just reiterating, there will be no curb cut on Redmond. We're, we are maintaining an undisturbed vegetative buffer along the existing creek, and that's kind of on the, the left side of the site plan, it runs all the way across there, and that provide, the existing wooded area will provide a good separation between our site and the adjacent residential areas.
Mr. Taylor, I do want to let you know it's been 15 minutes.
Oh, no. Okay. Are you sure, I'm sorry. I'll be quick. For the, let's see, for the Phase One building, the total parking space is required is 47. We would like to defer 20% of those spaces, so 38 stalls will be constructed. For the Phase Two building, the total parking space is required is 66. We would like to defer 20% of those spaces, so 53 stalls will be constructed. Can we move to the landscape plan? I'll be brief. We've met all landscape ordinances from St. Louis County proposing exactly what the ordinance requires. The landscape palette includes seasonal color in all 12 months of the year. Site triangles are indicated so as to provide public vehicular safety at both entrances, exiting and entering the site. Every tree and perennial on the proposed plan is a Missouri native. 83% of all shrubs on the proposed plan are Missouri natives, and the vast majority of plants selected are pollinators and attract songbirds and provide, and/or will provide food sources for wildlife. And finally, we'll show you some renderings. This first one here, this, this shows the, an overall aerial view of the proposed buildings and site context. So Benham is the, the road on the right, and then Redmond's behind. So Phase One toward the front, Phase Two toward the back. Next slide. This here is a view of the Phase One building as seen from the Benham curb cut, so as you're entering the site. And this building, again, it houses, it'll house the shelter, clinic, and adoption spaces, administrative on the second floor, and that one-story portion, that's the existing building, and then the addition is the two-story portion. Next slide, please. And this rendering is another view of the Phase One building, and that's seen from Benham as you're approaching, I guess you're going kind of south, and this shows the clinic entrance. So there's two separate entrances, one for the adoption area and then one for the clinic. So we just wanted to highlight that. And then finally, this slide, this rendering, I'm sorry, shows the Phase Two building, which will be used for community gathering and outreach events, workforce development, summer camps, educational purposes, things like that. And it also shows the dog park, which will be part of the Phase One construction. That's all I have. Thank you.
Brief wrap-up, can I get 30 seconds just to wrap things up? So if we can go back one slide. I think you all have heard about the, the strong need, that's the, this particular portion of St. Louis County is almost calling for it. And the AP is there to answer that call and propose this particular structure and this development in an area that also, I think we could all probably agree, has probably seen some better days. It's a $22 million investment into North St. Louis County. 50 jobs will be created and utilized at this, at this particular location, provided the approval is issued. And you also heard Ms. Javier talk about the town hall outreach that was conducted not long ago and led by Councilperson Webb. She has also signed a letter of support that is in your packet and is in the slide deck as our last slide that I urge you to consider. And in general, I, I think we've done what we can to listen very carefully to your staff and to incorporate all revisions, and we're, we're pretty excited about this project and happy to answer any questions.
With that, do we have any questions from the commissioners?
Four questions. Yeah, excited, very excited. I live close by there, I'm driving past there all the time. So very happy to hear this kind of investment is coming, $22 million, wow, I'm blown away. Wow, thank you. Question on setback and greater flexibility. You spoke about that. So you're changing, so part of changing the zoning will allow this flexibility. So you'll be able to have the buildings closer to the property lines? Is that what's happening?
So procedurally, the C8 will be, if the commission were to recommend approval of such a request to the county council, the draft ordinance would be based on the draft preliminary site development plan that they have submitted, matching the setbacks that they, that they have shown.
Can I make a comment about the Benham Road setback?
Get the microphone.
Yes, come to the microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just briefly, the existing building along Benham, I just want to, you might notice if you're familiar with it, there's a portion of the building that sits really close to Benham, and that's the part we're taking off, and we're, we're not building that back. So it actually will sit a little bit further. It'll align with the rest of the building. So, I mean, on the Benham side at least, we're creating a little bit more of a distance between the road. That's all I wanted to say.
And then I heard a comment about, last, I heard a comment about the curb cuts from Redmond Road, and that you won't have any curb cuts. So tell me, speak to me about the logic on that, making that recommendation for the planning staff.
Sure. So through the pre-development review process, there is a, there is a residential street that tees into Redmond, so the location of any sort of curb cut would need to be immediately, would need to be immediately across from that, which could preclude some of the design criteria. Of course, I don't want to speak for the applicant who is here, but we also generally, if applicants can reduce their, their access, we always want to, we're also, we always entertain those.
So the only entrance to the site is going to be on there?
That, as, as proposed.
So on Redmond, and I should note this, I wrote all the time, is there a left turn only lane at that point in front of the building on Redmond?
You mean the, the site?
Yeah.
Onto Benham? No, I think you can only go right.
Onto Redmond, onto Redmond.
No, there's not.
Daycare is right next door.
Oh, that's on Benham. Right, right.
On Redmond, there's a daycare right next door to the, to the site, and so, there may or may not be. Okay. My other question is, this 20, this deferment of parking spaces, can somebody explain to me why, what, the logic on this, or what's happening with parking that went into this?
Why we wanted to defer it? Basically, when we did the calculations, especially for the phase two building, well, I guess part of it is, we kind of looked at the amount of staff that we're going to have, and it just, it doesn't seem like, like, it's allowed per, we can defer the parking. We don't think we will use it all with our staff counts. And then for the secondary building, because it's a lot of assembly space, gathering space, the parking requirements are really high, but we don't see it actually being used that way, like having huge gatherings very often, if at all. So it just seemed like far too many parking spaces compared to what our actual use is, and that's why we wish to defer some of those spaces, because we just don't think we're going to be using the entire count. Does that help?
I can add to that. That being said, so, one of your other facilities, do you have this type of park there right now at one of your other?
Oh, the dog park?
Yes.
Okay, so that is not for the public to use? Is that what you mean?
No, no.
Okay.
I don't mean that, but how many people are there using that? Because that is a park that you had on.
So if you're talking about the?
Answer the question.
Yeah. So the dog park portion of the facility is for our staff to be able to do enrichment for the animals who are being housed at the shelter. It's also used by volunteers who will be there. So when we were looking at, I'm not an expert in parking, but what I can tell you is, the use of the facility during the daytime hours, we will be having people at the adoption center, they will be coming to wellness appointments, what you would typically do during the day. We anticipated for the education programs, those are primarily going to be on the weekends. So the staff and people who would be there during the week are not going to be there on the weekend. That's when we would see most of the use for that secondary building. That's going to be your camps for children during the summer. It's going to be dog training, perhaps in the evening when people are off of work. It'll be things that will happen on the weekend. So we won't be using all of that parking all at the same time, because the buildings won't be completely full at the same time, probably ever. And if so, it would be extremely rare. And then, of course, much of the building is being housed by animals, so we'd factor in how much we would need for the people.
And so, when the staff report comes at your next meeting, we will have an analysis of this request of the applicant for, for the commission to digest.
Because if you look in the required amount of parking spaces, then you have less site green spaces. Is that allowed here?
And that's part of it, yeah.
Yeah. So for what it's worth, you heard Ms. Javier talk about the fact that the primary occupants of this building with its proposed use are not human beings. They don't drive, they're animals. So in that respect, I don't think that the man or the need is there for parking. If you look at the, the region in general and the amount of parking that exists, you might come to the conclusion that there's ample, if not over-parking in the region. And when you contemplate a new development with $22 million going in and a clear desire to improve aesthetically the region, then the logical conclusion might be to add more green space and to add less impervious parking space, especially if we don't need it.
So the green spaces is an important part of it, not only for the animals, but for the people. So not only do we care very much about enrichment and having walking trails, you know, there's that, that area, that wooded area right along the property, there's like a little stream that goes through there. We actually envision having like a walking trail, so our volunteers can walk pets on that. We also want to be able to support the mental health of our staff, so we encourage our staff to get outside to walk. We want lots of green space, which is another reason why we wanted to prioritize native plants and make sure that there was greenery and all kinds of things on the property to just promote that, that really positive look, but also it's good for the people.
Question, so, go ahead.
One last question. Is this one lot with two buildings or two lots that need to be consolidated?
Two lots that need to be consolidated with two separate buildings, as proposed.
There's currently one building. One building would be, there's currently one building on it, so there's?
So going back to the parking question is, who determines if you have enough parking and if it has to be extended? Is that them or is that the county?
So that is, we apply the zoning ordinance to any request that they have, including ensuring that any sort of requests for parking reductions is in line with the procedures of the zoning ordinance. So that is, when staff puts together the information report for you all, we will analyze the request as to, does their request meet the intent and the spirit, and not just the intent, but does it meet, if we apply the code, does it, does it, can it be appropriately applied in this situation? And I can think of any number of positive reasons, reduction of impervious, but of course, at this point, I am giving color commentary that we will save for our information report, so.
Any other questions?
Yep. Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. How are you funded as an organization? Are you mostly donations?
Correct. So we're a nonprofit organization, so all of the funding that we're using for this project is individual donors. We also apply for grants through private foundations, family foundations, corporate foundations. We do foresee that there are tax credit opportunities.
I was going to ask if there are tax credits part of your?
There are tax credit opportunities that we are currently exploring.
New market tax credit?
New market. Mm-hmm. Correct. But most of it is private donors.
So this is going to be a $22 million project, fully funded with grants, tax credits, and donations?
Correct.
No loans or anything?
So we're, we're working with our financial institution on what the best mix of funding for this project will be, given the current climate we have as an organization. We have investments and other financial resources that we will utilize in the best way to maximize the impact.
So, so it's not finalized yet, what the capital stack is?
Then, we know that the money is there to do this project. It's just the mix that we want to utilize for it. We have had donors already say that they want to support it. We just have to get to the point where we can finalize it, and then we also anticipate doing a capital campaign as well.
In regards to the tax credit, is there a CDE already working with you? Like, are you using Heartland Reg, HRIF, or who's the?
We're working with an, with an organization that will help with that.
Okay. So it's not, but, so you don't have one that's already saying we're, we're making a $10 million allocation into this project?
We are in the process of looking at how we do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
One more question. Phasing one and two, what is that timeline that you're looking at?
Do you want to talk about that? Okay. So we have our fabulous construction person here. We actually, once we know that we can move forward with this project, we have already worked on plans, we have our construction company engaged that we intend to use for that, we have funding to get us started, and we are ready to get moving. So our hope is that we could do that as soon as rezoning and finalizing, finalizing and closing on a building would be possible. Oh, how much gap between one and two? That also depends on the funding. So the board has committed to phase one. That's sort of a definite, we will move forward on that. The phase two is going to be incorporated into the capital campaign. What our hope is, is that we will be able to do them consecutively.
Does that, does that mean you're going to go ahead and put your infrastructure and everything in back for, for phase two?
Correct.
All right, one last question. And forgive my ignorance. Is this a kill shelter or no-kill shelter? Did you already speak to that? What do you do with the pets you can't rehome or find a?
So there's a lot of, I will say, there's a lot of confusion and divisiveness around kill versus no-kill.
That's why I'm asking.
So at the APA, we place every adoptable pet, no matter how long that takes. There are instances where euthanasia is a humane necessity, so if an animal is suffering and cannot be cured, or if they're a danger to the community, we take that responsibility very seriously and would not place them. But what I will say is that in terms of how no-kill status is defined, which is 90% live release rate or above.
Say that, say that again, 90?
So, the way that in animal welfare, no-kill status is defined is a 90% or above live release rate, and the APA does accomplish that.
Live release rate?
Live release rate. It's 90% of the animals that come in have a live outcome. What I will say is animals come in for many different reasons. They could come in because they're injured, they could come in because they're sick. So what we do, rather than focusing on one single number, our objective is to make sure that we provide the most appropriate and humane care for that animal, and every animal who is an adoption candidate, we place them, no matter what, and no matter how long it takes.
I just know that is a hot-button issue, I guess.
It is.
Just wanted to know.
We appreciate all these questions, and you can tell that the representatives here are going to be quite transparent. To the extent that you have any questions that are purely from the zoning perspective, I think that's the purpose of this board, and we're happy to continue to engage in that respect. Obviously, things might go a little bit from one side to the other, but I know that your time is limited, and we want to respect that.
Thank you. Any more questions? No questions. At this time, maybe she?
Can I give you these packets?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just, just?
Give them to Abby. And Abby will, will distribute those to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
At this time, is there anyone out in the crowd that would like to speak in favor for a group? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this project? Are there any individuals that would like to speak for a group in opposition or concern? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern? Okay. If not, could I see a hand of folks that are in favor of this project? Eight? Eight in favor. Those opposed? Eight have that, and this hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
We've got another one after this one.
And next, we have PCE 10-25 Dennis Sehick.
PC 10-25 Dennis Sehick is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 shopping district to develop apartment dwelling units. This is a .44 acre tract located on the west side of LeMay Ferry Road, approximately 300 feet north of Butler Hill Road. This site is located in South County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. This site does have dual zoning. The subject petition area is the hatched area. From this larger aerial, you can see some of the commercial development fronting Butler Hill Road and LeMay Ferry Road. This site is immediately north of a proposed QuickTrip location that the Planning Commission may recall. And then you can also see the existing multifamily residential to the north and west of the site, and single-family residential to the east of the site. This is looking south into the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking south down LeMay Ferry Road. Looking north up LeMay Ferry Road. This is looking southeast across LeMay Ferry. Looking west into the site. Looking north at the neighboring commercial structure. Looking south at the existing structure on site. Looking west into the site. Looking north into the site. This is looking west again at the existing structure. And now we will hear from the petitioner.
We will get your, make sure to pay your name to the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. My name is Gary Ploser. I'm here representing Dennis Sehick for the property at 5017 LeMay Ferry Road. So as, as Abby said, the property has two zoning classifications. The front is C2, the rear is R4. We're just asking for a CUP for the front portion is C2. We're going to convert the existing building there, which is somewhat of an office building. We're going to take off the roof, the slanted roof, put in a single roof, as you can see in the elevations. But we'll get to there later. We'll start with the site plan. There's a, an existing single driveway that goes in off of LeMay. We're going to convert that to a double, and we'll have two parking spaces for the apartment that's going to be in front. We're going to remodel the front building, and then behind it, we're going to build a coffee cafe. And so there'll be parking for the two units of the apartment, and we have sufficient landscaping there for that, that portion of it. And then we have, we have exceeded the amount, 14 spaces were needed roughly. I think we have 16 total. So we've exceeded the amount of parking that's needed. And, and so we'll go to the next slide. That's a basic layout without all the contours and everything on it. Shows the parking on the north side, the landscaping for the residential area in front. There'll be a front entrance to the front building that's, that's there now, and we'll build a second entrance for the upstairs apartment on the left-hand side. Next slide. There's, this is the elevations. One on the right obviously is the front, the one on the left, on the, on the lower end is the rear, and then that's the rear showing the, the coffee cafe. Next slide, please. The same elevations, mostly of the house, the east, the west, the south, and the north. Next slide. Now this is the layout, where we have a lounge to the right if people want to stay and utilize the parking. We also have the cafe in the middle if you just want to come in and order coffee. And then that's how the units are going to be attached to each other. Next slide. The apartments, we haven't shown anything other than we've got the living room, the bedrooms would be in the backside. We haven't laid that out any, anymore than just We haven't laid that out any anymore than just what's there. Next slide. So that's what we we have. Mr. Sehick, would like to add anything or we both will be here for questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I was just.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry. I was wondering if there's any specific requirements for exterior stairs to residential unit? Do they have to be covered or are they going to get icy in the winter? I just, is there?
Well, Dennis is actually going to live up there himself. So yeah, obviously they will get a little icy. He could take care of, you know, shoveling the ice off of the stairs for both the units, I'm sure.
Okay. I don't, yeah, again, I don't know for residential of what's required, so I just bring that up. And then also it seems, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with that area that, I guess I'm concerned, are you expecting residential, like walking traffic to that location?
There's, there's not much to, well, the apartments behind, if the people know and and like it. We haven't really made a way to get through there, but because that's.
You don't have an easement to there, I mean.
Well, I mean, they're going to be coming from everywhere. I mean, most of them, they're going to come with a car and park on the parking lot and grab.
Yeah. I mean, I don't really.
And drive out because there's not a lot of foot traffic that I noticed there because the county did not even put sidewalks there. So, you know, I mean, I'm dealing with whatever I gotta deal with what's there now, you know?
Yeah. Are there any requirements for the zoning to have sidewalks?
I don't think there was, no.
So a redevelopment, a redevelopment of the site will include the requirements that sidewalk fronted be put along the frontage. That will be a, that will be a standard comment should the commission recommend or grant this, grant this proposal. And with the addition of a structure of that size, sidewalks will be required across the frontage.
Okay, will we be able to match those up with the ones from QuickTrip? Because we haven't, we haven't seen.
I would address, I would leave additional questions about how that will be, how that will be reviewed at a, at the point at which site development plans are submitted.
Very good.
No, thanks.
I have a question. Good evening, thanks for coming this evening. So that's going to be your full time resident or you just going to be, so you'll live there full time?
Full time, yes.
Okay. So there will really only be one apartment for rent to the general public?
I'll be, I'll be living upstairs and the bottom one is probably going to be rented out, yes.
Got it. That's all I have.
Mr. Taylor, may I, may I, may I ask a couple of questions of the applicant? Good evening. The coffee, the co, do you have a, are you, will you be running the facility or will there be someone?
I'm in the business as we speak. I've been in the industry for 15 years. I even had a place out here in Clayton that I sold right before COVID hit us. So I had to kind of downsize now that we are back on track. I'm trying to expand again. And yeah, I've been, I mean, I live in a place right now where my coffee shop is downstairs, my loft is upstairs. So I'm going to rent that out and move to the county.
Understood.
That's on the ver, on gravel road, right?
Okay. Okay, no, that's great. And I did notice three overhead doors on that, the sort of roll up doors to the.
That's.
Is that a, if there were design?
You are, you are still kind of, I still have not made my mind.
Okay.
Quiet. Am I going to put one of those like new full, I'm sure you guys seen those folding doors. But then I'm like, well, if somebody slams at the gun, they might pinch their fingers. But then I'm like, nobody supposed to touch this besides the staff or me. Or should I just have a roll up door where, you know, you roll it up and nobody can really get hurt? Because I see a lot lately, a lot of bars, cafes, restaurants. They start putting those out there so that way they get fresh air in. And I'm like, well, maybe I should do that too. So that's something that I'm kind of like still debating, which way should I go?
Oh, okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your explanation on that. And would you be thinking any outdoor seating at the site?
Right, just in front of the, in front of the building, I have to have a little patio.
All right.
I mean, as quiet it is there and as beautiful it is, you gotta have outdoor seating. Because I see a lot of coffee shops, it just drive through, in and out, in and out, no outdoor seating. It's like, you know, you gotta have outdoor ceilings where people want to gather together, where they can spend some time together. Not just like, you know, go through a drive through and order their stuff, pick up their stuff and disappear. It's going to have some seating in front.
I appreciate it. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not, I have one more. I'm sorry. I'm not that really familiar with coffee shops. Honestly, I don't drink coffee, but I'm just wondering, is it?
I'm what they call alcoholic. I go through probably a gallon a day.
Something that other food would be served, you know?
I'm sorry.
Would you have other, would you have food served there?
Planning to put some crepes in. I brought some recipes overseas when I went three years ago and I kind of paid attention what they do over there. So I'm planning to put a little, not really like restaurant food, just something quick, more like what we call here bar food. But since it's not a bar, you know, something quick, more like pastries and stuff like that, yes.
So you're going to have to put a kitchen in there?
No, I'm not going to have a kitchen there. All the stuff that, all the stuff that I'm planning to do is not required by health department to have a kitchen. It's what we call cold, cold prep kitchen. We're pretty much just gonna have a clean sanitary area where you prep that stuff and put in the cooler and sell it.
So would it be mostly open in the morning or what would your hours?
Planning to have, I'm planning to have the same hours what I have now, which is six, six A M. till nine P M.
Any other questions? None? All right.
Thank you.
At this time, is there any individual that would like to speak for a group in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any, is there an individual like to speak in group or opposition or concern? Are there any? Opposition or concern for a group?
Good evening. My name is Ernie Trakus. I'm a resident that lives virtually across the street from where this proposal would go forward. And so I'm here to speak on my behalf, on behalf of my family and others that wanted a voice, but for a couple of reasons, learned about this too late. And that's the first concern I have. And I would posit for the record that this hearing tonight, with respect to consideration of this petition, is compromised. And here's why. I'm going to hand your administrative assistant two photographs I'd like to circulate for the record. Both photographs depict this public hearing sign that was supposedly to be up for a period of time up until the hearing. I can tell you because I drive by it every day, that sign has been down for at least two weeks. Meaning that no one would have known that this hearing was going to take place or that the intricacies of the proposal or how to find out more about it. Just as important, in fact, maybe more important, the reason that we now have mailed notification to residents within a certain amount of space from a proposal is because of this very problem. Signs are taken down, signs are knocked down. And so the idea was, and I was on the council when that was passed, was to make sure that the people most directly impacted would receive mailed notice. I can tell you, because I live less than a block away, I received no such notice. So I have to conclude that no one else within the required range received notice of this hearing either. So the reason I'm the only one here to speak is because seeing the sign lying on the ground in front of the site, I double parked, got out of my car, walked up and looked at it two weeks ago. And so there's a problem with whether or not the people most directly impacted have any idea this proposal's going forward. So for that reason, I think the prudent equitable thing is for this hearing to be rescheduled and the sign placed back up and maintained in a way that the public can see it. And then let's see how many other people might come, might have a concern. So that's the first concern. The second concern is that this spot is already zoned commercial. It doesn't need any C P U or any other consideration to put a coffee house there. So the idea that somehow we need to have residential added to it is frankly dubious. I see no purpose in it unless, of course, it's to facilitate a later request to change zoning to place more apartments on the location. And as anyone knows, I spent eight years scrupulously making sure that it was difficult to construct apartments in District Six because District Six has more than enough apartments. We don't need any others. And so my other concern is that this is simply the camel's nose under the tent for a later request that we have additional apartments there. This area of South County is highly residential, peaceful and quiet. And I don't think this is a good fit. Some interesting comments. One, they represented that this was R four. No, it's R two, I believe. So I don't know why the misrepresentation. And then some other interesting comments by the petitioner. He cannot make up his mind about certain things. You would think at this point, coming here, asking you for a conditional use permit, the idea that I'm not decided on this or that wouldn't be an option. You'd have a clear vision, a clear expression of intent. You don't have that here. Again, going back to my concern about what is the real intent here? Another interesting comment, bar food. Why would you mention bar food if there's no intent to have alcohol there ever?
Mr. Taylor, it's been five minutes.
Oh, I will. Lastly, we're going to have food, but no kitchen. I'm not sure that'll even pass Department of Health. Anyway, I've made my points. I appreciate your time. I do think in order to give the people in this area a fair chance to comment on this, this hearing needs to be rescheduled, the sign put back up and you make sure that mailed notice be sent. You may.
So two weeks ago, you did see that this sign was down?
Yes.
Did you notify?
I've made at least two calls. My wife's made at least two. But my point is, I think to give people a fair chance, this should be rescheduled.
May I ask you? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, I want to fully understand what you're saying about the residential land that's attached to it.
I'm sorry.
I want to fully understand your comment about the residential land that's attached to the commercial. So are you saying that the coffee house fits on the commercial parcel?
Certainly it could. It certainly could.
Okay. So you're suggesting that that be just put on the commercial parcel that's there and the residential not be used?
If we have to have it at all, yes. I mean, the other thing is you've got a Q T next door, literally. And as all of you know, Q T is firstly, a convenience store. Secondly, a gas station or a fuel station. Q T, that's their, their genius. They make it a place for people to come and get coffee, get food, and if they need gas, fine. And so I just don't, I'm wondering the real efficacy of this type of commercial operation, i.e. a Starbucks type of operation, for lack of a better way to put it, by analogy. So I'm just, I just don't know that it's a good fit.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, thanks for coming. Did you used to be a congress or a council person? Or are you a council person currently?
No.
Okay. Used to be a council person.
Used to be, yeah.
And these pictures were taken two weeks ago?
Pardon me?
These photographs you distributed, these were taken two weeks ago approximately?
No, they were taken, I believe, yesterday. I didn't take them, but the signs have been down literally. I drive by it every day and I can tell you, it's been down for weeks.
Okay. And I appreciate your concern about this being a ploy for additional apartments in the future. But is that really practical as far as the space of this lot? That this is going to be eventually turned into some multifamily building?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, it seems like this would only be used as a commercial building because it's, there's no space for some multifamily development in the future.
Right, but my point is at some point, could there be an effort to have the, the, currently R two, rezoned to a different type of residential to accommodate multifamily apartments?
And.
Therein lies my concern. South County, particularly District Six, has plenty of them. We don't need anymore.
Right. So you, you're afraid of a possibility that this current building would be demolished and a multifamily unit would go up?
It's possible. I mean, I said, I'm just expressing my concerns.
Got it.
And I think that if you decide to approve this after a second hearing, because I do believe, again, in order to get the public an honest shot here, you need to give them a chance to know what's going on. Then there needs to be some very clear and rigid conditions imposed so that anything that might be proposed in the future would have to, again, go through a public process. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. First of all, I would like to add something to it about them, about that the gentleman is complaining about the sign being down. I'm barely at the property lately because I'm waiting for the plans to go through and whatnot. Just about whatever, last weekend or week and a half ago, we had that huge hail and huge wind. My property got damaged. On that property word said right now, the windows got knocked out, how big of a hail I had there. My car got damaged, how big of a hail I have there. With all the respect, I've worried about that a sign got ripped out. I'm just saying, and I didn't pay attention about this sign. Second of all, I can ensure you guys that I will not put apartments there because I love all the landscaping that I'm planning to do around there. I personally love gardening. I'm going to plant flowers and all that stuff there. I can give you guys in writing that while I own that property, I will never put apartments there, ever. This is all I'm trying to do, have so called two apartments, one where I can reside, one maybe as employees come and go, sometimes they need an apartment. It's where a manager needs an apartment, I'm like, hey, it's right there, and the coffee shop. Now that somebody is nitpicking that I cannot make my mind up what kind of windows I'm going to put on there. I told you that two plans that I'm planning, I still, the only reason why I have not made my mind up is because of these people. Some people say it's going to take three to six months to build those doors. Some people, I mean, what I mean by some people, companies that I've already been in contact with. Some say it's going to take four months to put the doors in, depending who is quicker. That's what I'm going to go with. That's pretty much, I understand people's concerns, but assuming something, I don't know. That's all I can say.
So when was the last time you were at your property?
Last time I was there, right?
In in the last four or five days at all?
No, last maybe a week or something when I met the appraisal.
So it's entirely, it's entirely possible that that is an actor, accurate picture and your sign is down?
I did not even pay attention to it because I was worried about the hail damage that, you know, listening to the, what's it called? Adjuster. Adjuster, you know, going around the house, I realized the window got knocked out. The car got damaged, the roof got damaged, cars' windows got damaged. That's what I was worried about, you know?
Yes, one question.
Yes, sir.
Serving alcohol?
No, sir. The only reason why I call it bar food, I couldn't think of it, what would you call it? And just because I called it a bar food, it's like, I'm sorry, but as you asked me a question, is it going to be a kitchen? No, it's not going to have an open flame kitchen, meaning no bar, I mean, no grills, none of that, no hoods required. The only stuff that I'm going to have a kitchen with, it's like the pancake place that we have down here. The only stuff that I'm going to have a kitchen with, it's like the pancake place that we have down here. You know, they do it in front of you, don't need no hood.
It's not like waffle machine, crepe machine?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, there you go. None of that needs, that's not considered really a kitchen, you know?
And my understanding is on the, and I misspoke on the zoning. That was my apology. It is R2. He'd like to keep it R2, even though it's going to be landlocked.
Well, we have it as R4 on the public notice here.
Well, you know what? It's so small, I can't read.
But whatever, that's not...
Yeah, yes.
Without having the zoning...
I think you might be looking at the other petition. This is C2 and R2.
Oh, you're right, this is C2.
But the R2 portion of the zoning is not noted on the public hearing notice because that's not the portion of the site that is covered by this petition.
Correct, and we had it on there originally, so we removed it all, changed the legal descriptions because the first 190 feet is the C2. So we changed everything on that. And from what I understand, if anybody comes along, buys the property from Dennis and wants to change, it'll have to come back here anyway. And a new CUP made, so, and the lot's not very wide. So it's not, won't be conducive to an apartment building at all, in our minds.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we're done. Just for the record, the story we was talking about in March 14, a month ago. At this time, could I have a show of hands? Those in favor of this project? Two. Those opposed? One. Okay. This hearing is over?
That's correct. So the, although we do, do we have any items for the executive session?
We do.
We do, okay. Yep, sounds good.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
To open up our executive session. Mr. Taylor? Yes? The last or the first public hearing on the calendar, are you moving that to the next one?
Because it had been held.
We postponed it.
Yeah, it'll be to the next.
Do you want me to open the meeting back up and do that? Okay.
Just FYI that, that's the one that I need to...
Yeah, so...
I couldn't tell because it was under, I guess, the owner's name, not the business name. But yeah, that first one's the one I need to recuse myself from.
Right. Executive session, we've got a meeting summaries of the comprehensive...
Oh.
Are we going to go there, Abby?
Yeah, will you advance one more, please? Thank you, this is good.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we should, my apologies. Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Okay, so the first item is the comprehensive planning committee report from the March 24 meeting.
Would you like to go over that with us?
I don't have slides for it.
Well, at our executive session meeting with the planning committee, we went back and then we had the minutes that we approved from the meeting before that was approved. And then Mel gave us overlay of what had been going on for the last month and a half, two months. And after that, that was pretty much it. We had a couple of comments.
Do we have some open houses coming up?
We do, we do. And that was sent out as well.
Yep.
Everybody should have received the open houses that are coming up. And if you could attend, that would be great. I'm sure our staff here would enjoy seeing some of the commissioners at these open houses. So with that being said, I think that's pretty much our report on that. Anybody else have anything to comment? Chris, you have anything to comment?
No.
Todd?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Let's move on to new business.
No, this one will, I would, we will hold this.
The Alex David one?
This was the petition, because this was the petition, this was, we were, we had even given irregular sort of deference to the applicant to grant their, to recommend granting their CUP this evening, but they did not, they did not appear, so...
I was wondering, is this like on a fast track or something?
It was, and the applicant did not, did not appear, so...
I'd like to move to hold this until the next executive meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it, and this will be held for our next planning, public hearing.
Yes.
Again, okay. Old business, PC 06-25 Harmony Towers.
Sean, will you advance to, yeah? Perfect. PC 06-25 Harmony Towers was a request for a conditional use permit in the R5 Residence District. The proposed use is a telecommunications tower on a 2.42 acre tract located south of the southern terminus of Peace Drive, east of Russet Drive and north of the eastern terminus of Cranberry Lane. As the commission will recall, this site is in North County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. And tonight, we're bringing to you a letter of decision consistent with the report you heard at your previous executive meeting.
Okay, you've heard the planning department's recommendation of approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second?
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it, and I believe, does she have anything else, Jacob?
Nope, that's it.
I'd like to move for adjournment?
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it, and we are adjourned for our next public hearing, our executive meeting.
That's correct.